Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any motions regarding the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
Motion by Bray, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Presentations, connotations, and acknowledgements.
Officer Moser. Oh, there you go. You ready?
Do you mind if I start with the introduction and everything else? I gave my brand-new officer one job today, and that was to give me his badge to pin on him. So Sergeant Bell's coming with that. We still have time, right? We'll start. I stretch things. I know it's hard which way to face, but face the council. The people who pay your salary. Everyone, welcome. We actually have one for him. So thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate you all being here. You can sit right back here a little bit more. There you go. Just like that. Right here. For pictures.
You don't have to split up with us.
For the next eleven and a half months, he actually does. That's why we build that probation in here. So want to introduce Malachi Moser to the council and everybody else who's attending, tell you a little bit about him, how he got here, and then I'm going to give him his badge, and then we're going to swear him in today. So Malachi grew up in Crystal, Minnesota. Growing up, he played baseball, was his favorite sport, obsessed with it, and I played that all through high school and traveling and rec leagues. Graduated and went, well, went to and graduated from Armstrong High School. After college, went to Mankato State University, excuse me, Minnesota State now, it was Mankato when I went, Minnesota State University and majored in law enforcement. At that same time, what a lot of people don't know is he was also in the National Guard for the whole time, serving our country, and he was in the field artillery unit, which was also really cool when I learned that about him. Right after college, Malachi started applying for law enforcement jobs and applied here in Elkhorn Market in 2018 along with Hibbing. Unfortunately, Hibbing was quicker than us and got him a job offer just before us, which he accepted. He's been up there ever since as a Hibbing police officer where he did patrol work for them for the last approximately two and a half years. Wanting to get back into the Twin Cities, he applied for our last opening in February. So that process, just to tell you a little bit about it and how grueling it is, started in February, took approximately four and a half months. In that time, we had thirty applicants. Of the thirty applicants, we narrowed it down to fourteen for our interview process. Of those fourteen, we interviewed for the first part of the interview process. We took eight to the second interviews. Of those eight second interviews, Malachi was number one. Was number one through the first, number one through the second. I can tell you that right now in our current hiring climate, to get as many candidates as we did was phenomenal, and then for to have Malachi be our number one, and then also only be applying for us because he knew he wanted to work here was awesome. So once he became our number-one candidate, he submitted a seventy-six-page background investigation packet. That investigation was conducted over several weeks by Sergeant Bell, going to every place that he lived, talking all his references, going up to Hibbing PD, and talking to the people that lived around Malachi up in Hibbing. So it's an extensive background, financial, criminal, everything background. Once that was done and it was satisfied that he could be an officer with us, he then was sent to medical testing, full day of medical testing, and then physical testing, had to do physical career testing as well. Once he passed that, drug screening too, I'll advise you, I passed that flying colors. Once he passed that, he went into a full-day psychological testing with a psychologist. Psychologist passed him with flying colors and recommended him for the position. So it is a grueling, long process to get hired here. He's been on board since July 1st, been training with Officer Garres and Sergeant Bell. So before I pin this badge on him, I want to let you know that I met with Malachi for several days he rode along with me, and I told him the huge responsibility that comes along with this badge and wearing it, and that this community is a community values-based police department, and that the weight on him when he's out there protecting this community is huge, and that we will accept nothing but his highest performance, his best dedicated service to everybody he comes across, and to treat everybody with respect, and that as long as he's here wearing this badge, he's going to be held to that high standard by me, his other officers, and the community. So he knows what goes along with wearing this badge. So it's with the great pleasure and honor today that I get to pin this badge on you. So congratulations for making it this far. We appreciate it.
Mayor will now be your oath. You're the best, right? Ready?
Yes.
More? In between the flag. Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Malachi Moser.
You solemnly swear to uphold...
You solemnly swear to uphold...
The Constitution, laws, and ordinances...
Constitution, laws, and ordinances...
And faithfully perform my duties...
And faithfully perform my duties...
As police officers...
As police officers...
Never betray my badge...
Never betray my badge...
Or the public trust...
Or the public trust...
Have the courage to...
Have the courage to...
And will...
And will...
Hold myself and others accountable...
Hold myself and others accountable...
Promote the vision and mission of the department...
Promote the vision and mission of the department...
Provide fair and impartial law enforcement...
Provide fair and impartial law enforcement...
Practice community values policing...
Practice community values policing...
Serve with pride...
Serve with pride...
Integrity and excellence...
Integrity and excellence...
And provide quality service...
And provide quality service...
To the best of my abilities...
To the best of my abilities...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome, Board Officer.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, Malachi and his guests, we're going to be going back to the Police Department. I see there was a K for... So we're going to go back there, have refreshments, take pictures, and tour the Police Department. If you're okay with that, we'll go ahead, and then I'll be back in just a little bit.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. I always so much fun to do. Straight down. Yep. Straight. All right. We have a new principal at Eagleview.
Yes, hello.
That must be you.
The crowd is dispersed now. It's not quite as official, but...
Welcome. I understand the superintendent had something to pull him away.
Yeah. So Tim Nipperner welcomed his first grandchild a couple of days ago. So there's a little granddaughter named Nora that was born in Chaska. So if he was here, he would probably start talking about how we're not related. Again, my name is Adam Nipperner. Tim Nipperner is the superintendent of New Prague, so usually that is the number-one question, is that he is my dad, or he is my... Which is not the case. We're actually distant cousins. I didn't, I taught at New Prague at the middle school from like 2008 to 2014, and when I went in to interview, they said, "Mr. Nipperner will see you now." And I had no idea at all, the only Mr. Nipperner I had known was my father, so that was the first, that was the first of it, so it was kind of a surprise. But that's all, the number-one question, I was making my staff thing the other day, that's the number-one slide I have on there, just because it's kind of funny to see and to end up having two people being the same small, pretty similar name. But anyway, yeah, happy to be here, super happy to be right down the road here at Eagleview. It's been a great start. I guess a little bit about, I won't talk too much about myself here, but I grew up in Wilmer, so I grew up in Wilmer, I was in Cordia College in Moorhead. I taught in Long Prairie, Minnesota. Anybody know where Long Prairie is?
I do.
Okay, there's like one or two. It's not the biggest place, but Long Prairie-Greagle, it's north of Sock Center. So I taught there for three years. I taught at Red Wing, and then I taught here at New Prague for the longest time, so I taught for five years in New Prague at the middle school, and then I got my administrative degree. I went to Prior Lakes, so I was there for a year at the high school. I spent seven years in Shakopee in a sixth-grade building and then at the high school. So I've been there the last seven years, and I'm really excited to be back in New Prague in the district and here at Elkhorn Market at Eagleview. It's a great opportunity to come back to the elementary level, which is just something that I really enjoy. Fun kids, fun kids at the elementary level. So the summer's been busy with this last month here. The building always seems to have stuff going on at Eagleview, like even when I left, there's a full parking lot, there's some football going on, so lots going on, but there's kids' company, and there's, there was summer school and Kinder Academy and all kinds of stuff keeping kids busy. We had kindergarten tours, we brought kids in, and I was able to kind of get a lay of the areas. There were probably fifty kids that didn't come in, so then I drove out books and like a welcome packet to those kids, so that's fun to see kids kind of in their own element, and also just see how large this district is from going to Webster to Lonsdale to just kind of all over the place. So that was fun. I met one-on-one with all the staff, so Eagleview has got a staff that's just extremely dedicated, excited, values the community, values each other, values education, so it's just a really nice place to be able to step into. So yeah, I just kind of want to introduce myself, and hopefully we're kind of returning to a comfortable school year that'll be more similar to what we've experienced in the last eighteen months, but I think people are kind of ready and ready to be flexible and to adjust to what we need to adjust to and just get the kids back into learning as much as we can. So I don't want to take up too much time, but that's kind of a little bit about me. And are there any questions, really?
Well, we won't grill you with too many hard questions. I appreciate you coming and introducing yourself, and yeah, you're going to be part of a great community here in Elkhorn Market, and yeah, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is our audit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
Welcome.
I'm Matt Mayor, representing your lot from Bergen, TDD. The projector rolling here.
The results of the 2020 audit.
As that's warming up, I'll just remind you that the city has a responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public, to show the results of your operations financially, to show your financial position at the end of each year. Our job as your auditor is to come in, test, examine, and give an opinion on those financial statements so that users can be assured that they are a true and accurate representation of what happened here during the year. We do that through an independent auditor's report, which is in front of the financial statements, one of the two documents that you received in your packets, and this year as in years past, we're providing an unmodified or clean opinion for you, which is the best that we can provide. It means that the numbers that we'll be looking at do accurately represent the city's financial position at the end of 2020, and also the results of those operations, the revenues that you collected and the expenditures that you made. I think this is a good time to recognize the efforts of the city staff, specifically Kelly Stewart, the city's accountant, and I want to thank her for all of her hard work in preparing for us. It's very clear she shares the same goal that we do, and that is accurate financial reporting, to give you good numbers so you can run the city appropriately, and we've got a good report here tonight to show you. So with that, I want to summarize the results of the audit beyond the audit opinion. We looked at what we call internal control. That's the way you do business here as the city, basically how you process transactions, your policies, your procedures, and the like. And if we have recommendations on that, we have an obligation to report that to you each year. We have two this year, there are two that you've seen in the past as well. In the accounting environment, we like to get as many checks and balances and touches on everything that happens as possible, and in a small office environment, we often don't get all the ideal segregation that we would like to have. Usually, we'd like to have four different people touch everything that happens in the accounting environment to make sure accuracy and safeguarding of the assets occurs. It's just not possible in a small office environment, so we will remind you of that each year, and we'll let you as a council decide the cost-benefit of adding staff and the size of the department moving forward. And then also, if we make any adjustments or corrections to the financial statements, we need to make you aware of that, and we did make a couple as listed in the documents there. Very standard for any kind of running of the findings when it comes to internal control. Legal compliance for the year, this is looking at how the city complied with state statutes regarding things like contracting and bidding, conflicts of interest and the like, how you deposit and invest your funds, and we had no issues there as well. And then the other document that you received was our communications letter, and that is the one that has the charts and the graphs and the analysis, which I want to provide you to wrap things up today. I'm going to look at four funds with you. What I want you to be conscious of is the results of operations, the financial position of each of these funds, and hopefully my presentation's going to give you an idea where you landed in 2020, so as you start to analyze 2021's results with the reports from Kelly and Tom, and also work on the 2022 budget, you've got the proper groundwork and foundation on which to do that. When we look at the general fund, that's the main operating fund of the city. When you think of the city of Elkhorn Market, you pretty much are thinking about the general fund. It's the police department, it's the streets department, it's everybody here at City Hall, it's the elections, it's basically everything that takes to run the city. And really, in the government environment, we're not really looking at profit or loss, that's not the way to look at it. It's more of a budget-compliance-based analysis. As a council, each year you have a job to put a budget together. You have to decide what the levy's going to be, you have to decide what a reasonable amount of spending is going to be, you're going to hand it off to your team, and it's their job to make that happen. So what I want you to do is look at the results of the general fund in the context of that budget, and I put it up here just to remind you of what that budget looked like for the year. Revenue of $2.3 million, expenditures of a little over $2 million. You had transfers out of excess fund balance to the capital funds, about $227,000, and the bottom line is a positive $29,000. I call that your increase in fund balance, I think, in your budget, you actually call it the contingency line item. So that's the plan, that's the way things were set up for 2020. Here's what actually happened. Revenue came in a little bit better than anticipated, it was about $90,000 better than anticipated. Licenses and permits were probably the big factor there, but it was just a little bit here, a little bit there. The budget was very accurate, and the revenue projections were very good, actually a little bit conservative, and you came in a little bit better than anticipated on the revenue side for 2020. Expenditures for the year were a little bit over budget as well, they were about $160,000 over budget. In general government, you might have remembered you bought some land, so that was not in the initial budget, so you came in over as a result of that. And remember, 2020 was the year of COVID, certainly an anomaly as far as an operating year goes. You had some CARES funding that got transferred into this fund, and you spent some public safety items out of this fund that you probably wouldn't have if not for the COVID money and the CARES situation for the year. So not unexpected that you were a little over budget, and we're seeing that very consistently across all cities throughout the state. You did make a significant transfer out to your capital funds. They benefited by about $628,000 versus the couple hundred thousand you had planned to transfer, and that was because the fund balance position, the health of the general fund, ended up being better over the course of the last couple of years than anticipated, and as a result, that benefited your capital funds and put some nice dollars aside for future needs that the city has. You also got the CARES funding that came into the fund, the transfer in, and after everything was said and done, your fund balance went down by about $206,000. Now, we talked earlier about the fact that the plan was for it to be pretty much break-even, but that $1.17 million fund balance at the end of the year is actually right where you want to be. Tom and Kelly do an excellent job of managing the health of this fund. That fund balance number is based in policy. Your policy says that you want to have 50% of your budget at the end of the year there, so you've got 50% to get through the next year, and that $1.1 million at the end of 2020 represents about 51%, 52%. So two ways to evaluate the general fund. One, did the budget that you put together as a council get enacted, and did they follow it? Yes, definitely they did. And is your financial position at the end of the year where you want it to be as a result of that? You have a policy to be at 50%, you're at 51%, 52%, check that box as well. So an excellent year for the city's general fund overall. Okay? Here's the revenue that came into the fund. I want to remind you that about three-quarters of the revenue that you have to work within your general fund for police, streets, everybody here at City Hall, is based on that levy. You do get a little bit of money from the state and intergovernmental, LGA, licenses and permits make up a little bit, some miscellaneous fines and charges for services, but really, when you guys decide what that levy's going to be, that's going to dictate the health of the general fund overall. So I know you take a lot of thought when you decide what that number's going to be, but just remember that the health of the fund is ultimately going to be based on that levy over time. Talked about that. Here's where the dollars get spent. About 35% or a third of the general fund is the folks here at City Hall, that's administration, finance, planning and zoning, that type of thing. Public safety, the police department is the main factor there, 38%. The fire department would ultimately fall under public safety, but that's actually in a separate fund outside of the general fund because you've got a lot of other municipalities that are participating in that, so rather than kind of mix that into the general fund, we isolate that into some separate areas. So that is pretty much all police, and then public works is the street department. Park and rec, a little bit off in 2020, operations were down because of COVID. Want to wrap things up with a look at your enterprise funds. These are your utility funds, and we're going to look at these a little bit different. They're not really budget-based, although you put a budget together for them. We pretty much can just look at them like we run a business. Do they have operating income at the end of the year? Are you charging enough in each of these funds to cover the cost of doing business, and then also to pay the debt that you have in these funds as well? And the water fund is having good years. You can see revenue in green has exceeded expenses in blue each of the last five years running. You're generally posting operating income of somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 each year, which is great. Just want to remind you, though, there is a fairly significant debt burden in that fund, and most, if not all, of that profit gets paid to bondholders to pay some of the debt for the infrastructure that's in there. So not to use a cliche or a pun not intended, but you're kind of treading water in this fund, keeping things level, and your fund balance is about $350,000 or so to end the year, and that does represent about a half a year's worth of cash flow. So it's in a reasonable place. Keep in mind, though, that you're probably not going to be able to rely on that fund for emergencies when it comes to capital, and you might need to find other resources. But the general fund is mostly for operations, you've got capital funds for the rest. Typically, that utility fund, we might want to look at having an operating piece and a capital piece, but that's part of the long-term plan. That revenue, you know, you monitor rates, and you certainly have steady increases in rates over time. The reason revenue kind of jumps up and down is that we have your hookup fees, your WAC fees, your access fees in there as well. So as development, you know, kind of ebbs and flows over the years, that happens as well. So you can see that it's been kind of level, not making, you know, great strides when it comes to revenue, but solidly over $1.2 million each of the last four years in that fund. Sewer fund's a little different story. The challenge in this fund is twofold. You've got a lot of infrastructure which kind of artificially deflates the cost of running operations here. We actually have a lot of what we call paper losses in this fund because of depreciation. That being said, it is cash flowing negatively as well, and that's mostly, two reasons. You can see, again, the revenue there has been relatively flat over the course of the last five years, but those expenses have continued to increase, and those expenses are mostly related to the Met Council. And I've got good news and I've got bad news when it comes to that. One of the Met Council fees is related to just the cost of, the operating cost they charge you each month, and you got to make sure that what you're charging is, you know, in par with that, so you can cover the cost of that, along with your local costs of running the sewer fund. But the other piece of it is that agreement you've got regarding reserve capacity and the loan associated with that. And fortunately, through work of administration, you've been able to cap your obligation when it comes to that. So a lot of those expenses that we're seeing in 2018, 2019, 2020, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars each of those years, should be capped, should be done with, and you can start working down that debt that you owe them moving forward. This fund, because of those reserve capacity obligations, actually has a deficit fund balance or a deficit liquid position of about $1.9 million. That is significant, that is something you want to be conscious of, it's not something you're going to correct overnight, but with having that loan capped with the Met Council, you're going to be able to chip away at that, and as long as you monitor rates and establish rates to cover your current operating expenses in that fund, start chipping away at that debt, hopefully we'll start seeing some progress on that. But we'll continue to monitor that with you and report back on that each year. But if you had one fund or one thing that you remember from my presentation tonight, it's the sewer fund, and continue to work with administration in getting where you want to land on that one. Storm Sewer Fund is in good shape as well. It's a relatively new fund compared to the others. Doesn't have significant operating expenses year to year. You do have some maintenance costs in this fund to take care of things on an annual basis, but really what you're doing here is saving up resources when the big capital or big maintenance things come down the pike. You do have operating income several of the years, operating loss for 2020, a small amount, but most of that's depreciation-related. This fund has about a quarter of a million dollars of fund balance, so it does have about a year's worth of spending in fund balance. But again, remember, in these utility funds, you want to have an operating portion and a capital portion, and as this fund ages and matures, hopefully you'll continue to build on that, so when the major projects come down the pike, you're prepared for them and can pay for them in cash moving forward. I'll leave it at that. Kelly, Tom, if I missed anything from our earlier discussions that you wanted highlighted, be happy to bring that up with you here and have that discussion, but be happy to stay for any questions the council has or any further discussion Kelly or Tom would like to have.
Thank you so much.
All right. Great to see you again. All right. See you next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Time for public comment? Does anyone have a public comment? No? On the concept agenda? Anyone have any questions on concept or any items?
Is letter F something we need to remove related to our budget discussion?
That's a good question. So authorized purchase of a vehicle?
That is not a vehicle that is being made.
Not one of the four that was included in the letter?
It is.
It is.
So on that one, there is a risk on that. I think we could do the same thing, just like purchase on that back.
So let's remove item F, concept, time limit's a long term.
I think we would, well...
charge you each month and you got to make sure that what you're charging is, you know, in par with that so you can cover the cost of that along with your local costs of running the sewer fund. But the other piece of it is that agreement you've got regarding reserve capacity and the loan associated with that. And fortunately, through work of administration, you've been able to cap your obligation when it comes to that. So a lot of those expenses that we're seeing in 2018, 2019, 2020, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars each of those years should be capped, should be done with and you can start working down that debt that you owe them moving forward. This fund, because of those reserve capacity obligations, actually has a deficit fund balance or a deficit liquid position of about $1.9 million. That is significant. That is something you want to be conscious of. It's not something you're going to correct overnight, but with having that loan capped with the Met Council, you're going to be able to chip away at that. And as long as you monitor rates and establish rates to cover your current operating expenses in that fund, start chipping away at that debt, hopefully we'll start seeing some progress on that. But we'll continue to monitor that with you and report back on that each year. But if you had one fund or one thing that you remember from my presentation tonight, it's the sewer fund and continue to work with administration and getting where you want to land on that one. Storm Sewer Fund is in good shape as well. It's a relatively new fund compared to the others. Doesn't have significant operating expenses year to year. You do have some maintenance costs in this fund to take care of things on an annual basis. But really what you're doing here is saving up resources when the big capital or big maintenance things come down the pike. You do have operating income several of the years, operating loss for 2020, a small amount, but most of that's depreciation related. This fund has about a quarter of a million dollars of fund balance, so it does have about a year's worth of spending in fund balance. But again, remember in these utility funds, you want to have an operating portion and a capital portion. And as this fund ages and matures, hopefully you'll continue to build on that so when the major projects come down the pike, you're prepared for them and can pay for them in cash moving forward. I'll leave it at that. Kelly, Tom, if I missed anything from our earlier discussions that you wanted highlighted, be happy to bring that up with you here and have that discussion, but be happy to stay for any questions the council has or any further discussion Kelly or Tom would like to have.
Thank you so much.
All right. Great to see you. All right. See you next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Time for public comment. Does anyone have a public comment? No? On to consent agenda. Anyone have any questions on consent or any items?
Is letter F something we need to remove related to our budget discussion?
Good question, Tom. So authorized purchase of a vehicle?
That is not a vehicle that is being made. That is...
Not one of the four that was included in that?
It is.
It is.
So on that one, there is a risk on that. I think we could do the same thing with just like purchase on that back.
So let's remove item F, consent. So I think it's a long term.
I think we would, well...
Well, maybe we make a motion. Who said it's a motion?
How about consent agenda?
Yeah. Consent agenda is already that enough.
Second.
That's a motion by Josh. I'm giving Kate the second on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not talking anymore.
Sorry, that was easy.
You have no public hearings. So on to general business. No, we never actually voted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So if agenda passes, that's enough. Make a catch. Okay, on to general.
If you can just give us one minute, the last of the general business item, first item on the agenda is to review Blackstone Estates' tip request and we have a consultant that is going to be trying to zoom in. So we're trying to get this out of the...
You have a couple minutes.
Just going to make sure your computer up so you can see on your screen that the council is present.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Again, a continuation of the Blackstone Estates' tip request from the last council meeting. I am going to repeat a number of slides and information that were presented at the last meeting for the public's benefit that might review the tape and for council member Timmerman's benefit. Again, the applicant is Blackstone Estates LLC. This is a business entity that was just formed this spring specifically for ownership and management of the proposed project, which is an 88-unit apartment development. There are multiple investors in the project. The managing partners are Dave Chimalski, who is with us tonight and has been staff's main contact, Paul Okerson and Dynamic Homes LLC. There may also be equity partners that have been identified as Soul Pacific, HCI Real Estate and Larry Yensmore. The property is currently owned by Global Properties of New Market and would be transferred into the business entity, Blackstone Estates, if the project were to move forward. The initial request the city received was in April. The request identified $141,588 in tip assistance over 15 years, which totals $2.1 million. And then they also expressed an interest for a reduced amount for an additional five years. At this point, the project construction, based on Dave's comments at the last meeting, could begin in December of this year and go through the fall of 2022. The council held preliminary discussion in May, at which time they directed staff and elders to perform a detailed analysis. And the council held additional discussion at the last council meeting and that discussion was continued until a full council can be present to participate in the discussion. So just a basic review of what is tax increment financing and that is the ability to capture and use most of that increase in local property tax revenues from new development within a defined geographic area without the approval of other taxing jurisdictions. So it also affects the school district and the county, but the city is responsible for making the decisions about the use of TIF. So when we received the application, we first looked at the city's business assistance policy. We do have an adopted policy that identifies TIF as one of the tools in our toolbox. And although the primary objective of our policy was job creation, it specifically states that senior and multifamily housing may be considered on a case-by-case basis. And if the request did not really satisfy the job creation goals, that we must identify another public purpose for the use of TIF. And in this case, we have identified one of the primary city council goals that were adopted for this year is to promote high-quality residential development that includes a broad spectrum of housing choices in both type and cost. And then both the 2030 and 2040 comprehensive housing plans identified the need and desire for diversity and affordable housing. Minnesota statute, chapter 469, also outlines requirements for TIF. There is a housing TIF. The goal of a housing TIF under state statute is to create affordable housing. The maximum term allowed under state statute is 26 years. However, the term is set entirely at the discretion of the city council and should be based on the funding gap that has been identified. There is affordability requirement in state statute that either 20% of the units need to be occupied by those earning 50% of the area median income or 40% of the units occupied by those earning 60% of the area median income. And the applicant has proposed the 2050 criteria in their... Now, the city, there is also identified in statute in our policy, a but-for test. So what the council really needs to determine is would the development, would this development happen if it weren't for the use of TIF? Would it happen on its own within a reasonable period of time without the subsidy? Also stated in the guidance in state statute is, you know, the induced development will yield an increase in market value for the site compared to any other likely development that would occur without TIF. Currently, for the payable 2021 taxes, which have already, portion have been paid, the site was estimated market value was $420,000. Of that, $2,414 was city portion of the taxes. In this particular scenario, we'll discuss later, we're really looking over a 14-year term. Ellers has identified the need for subsidy over a 14-year term. So if we took that and if no development were to occur, just using, without any inflationary factors, that $2,400 a year to the city, the city would capture approximately $33,000, $34,000 worth of city taxes. The proposed development, in working with the county assessor and based on our analysis, the estimated market value would increase to $14 million. The city does keep a portion of that increase, 10%, and we also keep the base tax that we're receiving today. That doesn't go away with TIF. So the estimated revenue, should we, should you choose to approve TIF, would be about $216,000 over that same time period. Just tried to identify some other impacts or financial impacts to various city departments and funds. There would be very little impact on the city's public works department because there would be no additional new public infrastructure to be maintained. Police and fire, we do believe it would create additional demand. There is 88 additional housing units. It is difficult to quantify that and perhaps you can ask Brady questions about that later. The park fund, it would be an immediate, go ahead.
I didn't want to...
Go ahead.
...interact, but just so I'm clear, with TIF, we could still be capturing 216?
Correct. Over the 14-year period.
Over the, over the entire period.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah.
But that's also used to help pay for administrative costs of, that's used to pay for administrative costs. So you can think of it as a net. It's intended to be a net zero.
Right. And that's with the 14 years that Ellers is reckoning.
Yes.
So I wasn't trying to...
No, no. I'm happy to get any questions anytime. There being an immediate infusion into the park fund of $64,000, into the water fund of $368,720, the sewer fund, $192,544, the stormwater fund, $2,290. So total immediate infusion of revenue into various funds of $627,554. And this, I'm going to go through some slides that are just a project review. This was really Ellers' review of the project and some key points and facts, which these slides were also from the last meeting. The, so this is a breakdown of the proposed investment. $18.23 million is the current proposed investment into the property. Of that, $2.6 million of investor equity. 13.67...
If you were to, if you were to, is it possible to share the screen is, so I can see which slides you're referring to?
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I thought I did that.
And if not, maybe you could...
No, of course it is.
...tell me the book.
Of course it is.
Sorry to interrupt your book, but I just wanted to make sure we're up in the...
And I...
And if not, that's fine too. I can just jump in and it's...
No. Honestly, Bruce, I thought that I already did that, so. Can you see it now? Bruce, can you see the screen now?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so again, $2.6 million of investor equity. The TIF, proposed TIF note of $1.95 million and then $13.6 million proposed to be financed. The proposed financing or the percentage of financing meets the typical expectations identified by Ellers. The, this is just an overview of those estimates again. The pay 2022 tax estimates, $432,000. We'll use $14 million for any TIF projections, so that has been identified. So the total development costs of $18.23 million breaks down to $207,000 per unit. Ellers has identified similar projects. The per-unit cost ranges from approximately $200,000 to $275,000, so the cost is within the market range of what they would expect to see. Land cost proposed at $9,000 per unit. Similar projects range from $7,500 to $15,000 per unit for the land costs, so the costs are at somewhat the lower end of the market range. And just a quick note, the estimated market value of the land or the purchase price of the land for this project is $800,000. That's the exact same price that the county assessor has identified for the value of the land, so there's not any inflation, inflated land value. The developer proposed rents range from $916 to $649. There are studio and a variety of one and two-bedroom units within the proposed building. 20% of the units are, will be proposed to be affordable to those earning 50% of the area median income. Just as a note, an additional 60% of the units are proposed to be affordable based on the rents that have been submitted. However, this is not required under state statute. Down here in the lower left, we've just identified the rents that have been identified by Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for those earning 50 or 60% of the area median income for various unit types and bedrooms. The proposed operating expenses break down to $3,055 per unit, which is a little lower than the typical market range of $3,500 to $4,500 per unit. The management fee is proposed at 3% of the effective gross income, which is within the typical range that Ellers sees of 3% to 5%. The developer is not charging an upfront fee, which is typical. Any fees to developer would be paid from future cash flow and developers typically charge a fee of 3% to 5%. Just a quick overview of the exterior building materials. There are two types of prefinished steel siding that are proposed within the building, some horizontal and vertical. 28% of the building is proposed as precast panels with a brick imprint finish and our code requires that at least 25% shall have an exterior brick finish, so slightly above. And here's kind of a black and white rendering of one of the sides and the two ends of the building. This is a color rendering. You see the main floor has underground parking and, or not underground, main floor parking and then three stories of apartments above. Each apartment would have a balcony and you can also see the air conditioning units and the combination of vertical and horizontal siding. To note that the original building elevations that were submitted had a pitched roof and the planning commission requested more of a flat roof with, or lower parapets. This is a sample of a precast brick panel that Haley found just doing some research. This wasn't submitted by the developer or the applicant. It was just a visual that Haley identified.
Actually, Renee, if that was submitted by the applicant, this is an example of...
Okay. I apologize for that. So based on staff's review of the application materials, the request would meet the city's business assistance policy and state statute. And Ellers has reviewed the application and now we do have some slides that Ellers has put together and I'm going to turn it over to Bruce Kimmel with Ellers to talk a little bit more about their review.
Great, thank you Renee and thank the mayor, council, Bruce Kimmel and Ellers. It's nice to be with you again, albeit virtually. And I will go through all of these points because Renee did an excellent job of reviewing these background, number of these background details. Just want to see here if there's anything on this page about the developer's initial proposal that we needed to talk about. I don't think so. I think we covered those bases. Also, just to recap, our recommendation, based on our analysis of the need for assistance is a select door amount of TIF via pays for no, which is really 38%. You pay that from 90% of TIF that is received each year, if only that TIF, right? That is the whole premise of pays you go, that if the TIF is not up to what was projected, then you still only pay off 90% of whatever is generated if you prefer. And you would be retaining the other 10% for your administrative expenses in keeping up with the district. Also, as Renee noted, we are working on an estimated term based on the estimated taxes to be generated from the project, the estimated pays for term of 14 years. Again, you're aware that if we benefit, one of the key benefits of this project, what we give me is that 20% of the TIF will be affordable to people on a panel road, 50% of the line. We are recommending also that the council does not impose corresponding rent restrictions, but that we have the demonstrable vulnerability that would need to be documented here for these 18 units. With that, could people send you my requirement? Could be the amounts that would be applicable to 2021? And as you probably saw in the memo that I called Rebecca drafted for you, we talked about that, that live web registration looking for that memo and we really just believe that the rents will need by nature restricted because it will have to be, to back to affordable to people like 20% of the, or 20 units, 20% of the units and 50% of the median income. But also not having registrations will allow greater flexibility and will give the developer more options for putting those units into play for the larger size families, whereas the developer has represented that if there are registrations applied to those units, they would restrict that to the studio. Sorry, just got a little bit of feedback from you. Still hear you?
We can.
Moving on to the next slide, a little bit more on registrations. So again, this is one that we totally don't see our corresponding for registrations and developers said they would consider it, but that they were willing to studios. We think it's a better position for the city to take to just have the affordable requirement and then have that flexibility for developers to satisfy the requirement to choose larger units as well. And it's really important to note also that 80% against the other 80%. Our already anticipated preference below 60% of the... It's um, all are already anticipated to have rents below sixty percent of the Y. So you are having truly workforce housing across the whole spectrum of units in this proposed development, not just the twenty percent of units that would be uh, ratchet to full scatter of low fifty percent of area median. As I know we've discussed before, including at the meeting in July, the registrations would be in, uh, in place for the entire term of the TIF assistance, because it's estimated at fourteen years. Uh, we could negotiate an extension of that term, but enforcement might be difficult after the TIF now has been retired. That said, my experience with TIF and affordable housing tip, typically the developers keep quite a few of those units rolling forward, even if they're not income qualifying per se, they're still attracting and projecting to uh, people in that income demographic. So it's not like, you know, they just turn the units over instantly and you can go much higher. In addition, again, I would point out eighty percent units that are having projected rents that would be affordable to people out of low sixty percent of the income. You know, that seems to be the sort of sweet spot that the developers looking for in the market, and that, of course, would not be impacted one way or the other by the uh, expiration of the TIF term. So I, I think you have this whole confidence that you are going to have a, a pretty affordable project across the board for several decades to come. A few other provisions that we are recommending after the council's issued review of the city council as well as the city staff is we do think it's appropriate to have a two-part look-back provision. Um, and this is something that the developer has said they're compatible to. So we would be looking at their total development costs, TDC after constructions needed, just to make sure that those costs, certified costs, were in the involved part as was represented. It would only be a problem, of course, if their TDC was substantially lower than what is estimated. Of course, if it is higher, that is really a risk that developers is taking on. They put this development in, that would not impact uh, the pays you go, you know, in any way uh, or, or before. And then in addition, after the project is stabilized, that's typically after about three years, we want to take a look at their return on investment of that free cash flow, um, the revenues and expenses that generate that cash flow. The line, to make sure that, again, it's been the involved part, what was looked at here in twenty twenty-one. I think it would only be if the cash flow was significantly higher due to much higher rents, much lower expenses, neither of which seem very likely. But if that were to happen, we would, would take a look at rising would be the subsequent. Another provision that, uh, that I remember you expressed interest in, and you think this is certainly a valid point, is that there would be a provision in the development agreement to make sure that property management company is really um, actively engaged in addressing the disorderly conduct or other problems with tenants. You know, the whole, the whole key to success is a good management company uh, in terms of qualified tenants and making sure that the project looks nice and stays um, uh, stays in good order. And part of that is also just making sure that tenants are aligned by their responsibilities and their budgeting. Uh, also, a minimum value agreement. Uh, this is something that I guess, when pays you go, you don't necessarily need to have because in, you're only, uh, paying for the TIF that is generated each year regardless of what the valuation is. But we, we do think there is a value to have a minimum assessment agreement here because this is an investment that the city is making, and part of it is in terms of expanding the housing options available to the community, but you're also looking to expand the capacity. So I, this certainly seems to be appropriate to have a minimum assessment agreements. If the, we're, we're going for fourteen million dollars, um, that could be revised, you know, over the next couple of months, but assuming that, that the estimated value is still in that two and a half, fourteen million dollar range, uh, then we would, we would propose a MAP of fourteen million. So your decision tonight, assuming that, well, that uh, this, this presentation on both the project and the planning zoning elements of the project, as well as the financing competes with your satisfaction, the decision here is whether to move forward with further discussions and negotiation of the development agreement or not. And if you do decide that this is something that you want to pursue and, and, and take next step with, uh, you're not on the hook for anything at this moment. This is really just a green light, less disruptive process. And you work with city staff, you know, wanting those trants that are involved with establishing a TIF district and also negotiating that the problem with these provisions, um, with the developer. Also, uh, there would be a public hearing requirement, uh, on September twenty-eighth or later. I believe that we're suggesting fourteen at this point, but that would be something that could be moved earlier. Um, you know, at this point, it's our understanding that there's not as much tax incentive that we're not to work fourteen, but that is something that is ultimately up to you as a governing party. So the thing is just, you know, if you like what you're seeing, if you think we're hitting the mark, um, you can give us the green light, and not look, but if it's certain wheels, motion on about the TIF, we can all think of it. If you decide, you know, this is for whatever reason, that's something the city wants to pursue, then we would really just want to pause, I hope, the TIF and the development agreement, maybe have some post-game discussions with the developer or decide, you know, is there something else that they can propose that might generate interest in that one. But hopefully, uh, you're, you're feeling, you know, comfortable with the decisions in front of you and are able to give us guidance on that.
Bruce, can you take questions?
Yeah, Renee, do you wanna put that last slide down?
Yeah, this was just kind of a summary.
Oh, good.
Go ahead.
Josh had a question for Bruce.
Yeah, that was helpful. Thank you for putting that all in. Uh, and so then, uh, mayor and council goes out, if you have any questions, uh, or participating in any other discussion.
Yeah, Bruce, this is uh, Josh here. Question for you, uh, i- is there a definition, industry standard, or best practice when it comes to significant or ballpark? Um, I mean, I just think about three years from now when we're doing that, the, the look back. We, we don't have, perhaps, uh, we have a different council with different intentions and, you know, I, I just, if I were the developer, I'd want, you know, some, something to work with and, and not just a, a, just a blanket eh, ballpark estimate because, you know, ultimately, I can see that is, you know, if somebody wanted to tank this thing or, or uh, something that it would be pretty easy to do, it with a loose definition or something like that.
Right, right, good point. Also, the first look back relating to the total development costs will happen pretty quickly, really, Josh.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I guess I want to consult with some of his colleagues. It's been, it's actually been a little while since I've worked on that look back as part of the TIF agreement. But you often see, and it kind of depends on the size of the project, this size of the project. You might think of, of, uh, if the TDC is maybe more than ten percent lower than projected, that might trigger, um, that, that we're looking at, at some of the provisions. On the return on investment after project stabilization on say, year three or four, again, also, I, I, I think that's sort of, sort of adjustment that there, you know, you might look at more like fifteen or twenty percent, just knowing that there's power that can happen that on the pro, that could still cause, um, that cash flows go in the wrong direction. So I think you want to see a little bit more, wow, you're really topping up a different level of cash flow, different spread of cash flow. There are to trigger something as opposed to something that maybe is, you know, uh, that maybe like they do an amazing job of these now, so cash flow looks better in, in, you know, in uh, year three or four, but I guess I'm not doing great job of explaining this. I think we'd want a higher percentage, just knowing that there's more than happened on the flip side with the, or um, trends of operating growth. But we'll, we'll continue to discuss that with you in search of any, um, for any, um, development agreements for, you know, your approval, we would find out in another session to go over the specifics that are, you know, have been hashed out as it leads to look back and some of these other provisions.
Well, and assuming the developer's comfortable with it, I mean, that's.
What was, it was discussed a little.
Answer the question.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. And Bruce, it was discussed a little bit, this uh, look back provision at the last meeting, and, and there was a suggestion, suggestion uh, to maybe do another look back later in the project, in the term. Um, you know, I don't know, the developer can speak. So that was one of the questions.
And if that, certainly happening, and, you know, and I think we've got a good development preparing. One thing that occurs to me is, you know, if this project does really well, we all hope that it'll do well. Um, you know, maybe instead of snapping backs at the term assistance, you can negotiate an extension of some of the affordability for this twenty percent of the units. And so I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but, you know, that might be something that allows the TIF to stay in place. But then, um, you know, it's a, I don't know, good, like developers that could go beyond fourteen years. Um, and we did certainly cross that bridge in the development agreement discussions, but that might be one way of getting a win for the city and, uh, accessibility for the developer as well.
Okay.
I must have just blowed you with my own presentation, you know?
I'm not sure who's speaking next, is it?
Um, if you would like me to review the summary of the request, I can do that, otherwise it's up on the board.
Yes, looks like it.
Council?
Councils.
Are we ready to chat about this? Yeah, I think we're ready to discuss. I, who wants to start? Well, Josh, you want to start?
I'm fully in support of moving forward with the TIF as it is proposed.
I like it. I'm not gonna stand in the way of it. You okay?
Yeah, I just left screen last, so I want to make sure.
I'm, I'm not gonna stand in the way of the process moving forward. I, you know, my concern is.
Sorry, mayor and council, Renee, uh, me, but I, I lost the audio. I don't know if it's still through deep, but I'm having people's discussion right now.
Can you hear me now, Bruce?
Sounds like a negative. Well, we're working through that. You know, my, my biggest concern at this point is just the fact that the city, in fact, on, um, you know, growing the, growing the residence, or growing the residential at, how am I trying to say this? Growing the number of residents in the city without being able to adequately pay for the increased in costs to services. Over that said, or that being said, I still think we can move forward in the process. I'm not gonna stand in the way of it at this point.
Who wants to go first?
I'll get a thought.
So just, I know you guys all talked about this from when I was gone, but I have a couple of questions about the exterior of the building. And I'm sorry, I was not here for that discussion. I don't, I don't know that we talked about it much, other than the planning commission approved it and.
Okay.
But I don't know that anyone had.
I think.
No, we primarily talked about it, too.
Yeah, I think every presentation, we have, it purposefully inserted these slides regarding exterior building material in case you, um, had, uh, comments about it or wanted something.
Well, I, I would like to know a couple of things. Aesthetically, I think the peaks looked better on there than it does right now.
Yeah.
Um, the metal siding, can someone explain to me exactly the thickness? What it, what is that? I mean, is it going to rust over time? Is it, you know, I, I don't know anything about it, so.
I would call it a two.
Sure.
Well.
Could you stop up for a second?
Is that okay?
Yes, that's pref- preferred, so you.
Thank you.
So I find that in this climate in our state, that prefinished metal siding is the best product. If you were in Arizona, you wouldn't want that, it would fade out. But the nice thing about prefinished metal siding is that it can be painted later if it, if it's needed. Uh, it comes in a lot of different colors. It's, uh, a longevity in our climate, you know, forty, fifty years. So that, the brown strips in there are vertical type siding, and then the tan colored areas are just, what you see, just a four-inch lap, like you see on a kind of a residential feel, but it's steel. So, you know, you can go up to vinyl siding, you can kind of push your finger into it. The stuff, you can't do that. You can dent it, I mean, if you hit it with a golf ball-sized hail ball, insurance would pay for that. You can hit it with a baseball bat or a rock, but it's tough, and it doesn't rust.
What about, can you explain to me the fake brick on the bottom?
It's just, it's, it's print, you know, that's a good way, it's fake. You know, it's, it's molded into the concrete, so they build these big, I call them ice cream sandwiches because they have concrete on the inside, and then they have a thermal barrier, insulation on the core of it, and on the outside, you can put different finishes. This idea here is just to have a, a brick form. It's hard for most people to tell that it's cast in. And that can be colored, that's just a plain color with nothing in it.
Right, right.
We probably would have a little bit of a hue to it, cast into it. And I like it when it's cast in because it's integral to the stone instead of just being something on the surface. But they, they have paints and coatings now that are really good on concrete.
Is there thoughts of doing maybe more plants or something to make it look more aesthetic?
Yes, and I happen to be a landscape architect, and I'm gonna shrub this thing up big time, if you guys let me move forward.
Sorry, I don't mean to be negative, Nellie, but it looks very cheap.
The form is very simple, that's what I say about it. The, the materials are not cheap, and they're, they're very high-quality material, but it's a simple form. And the reason it's simple is because it helps us be more competitive and put more money into our materials and finishes versus having all kinds of roof lines and all this stuff. So what I do is, you know, with the landscape architect hat on, is I, I like to soften up these facades with the trees. I don't know if you have the slide that has the, just as a basic example. But I thought what would be nice on this, because I'm not a huge, I'm not a huge fan of the masonry bottom, to be honest, but this is a practical matter here.
Correct.
So we're meeting our brick requirement, we're meeting our thermal requirements, parking, the height and all that stuff plays into this. So what I'm thinking, you've got this, this uh, columnar element of trees in here to break up the facade and soften it. And then I think on the actual wall area here, I could see doing something. I haven't gotten this far into it yet, because that's, we can't get the cart in front of the horse yet. But I think some stainless lattices in here with lines on them.
But you are thinking of doing something to make it look a little bit more aesthetically pleasing.
Yep, and we can do those kinds of things if we're able to advance this project from this meeting. We can put things alter few to provide input on it.
I don't put that entrance, I mean, I see there's a covered entrance, but based on the surrendering, it doesn't look that interesting. Do you think about it?
I'm gonna get after the architect for that. But no, we could, I, I would like to see stone columns and, you know, a little bit more interest. That, that gable is right out at the end, you don't want to have the eaves protrude out a little bit more. You know, more plantings in the area to soften it up a little bit. This is supposed to kind of give you guys an idea about form, that sort of things. But I think that's an opportunity for, you know, we're kind of partners in this if we move forward. It's okay for you guys to make suggestions. You each have different backgrounds and ideas about things, and I, I accept all those ideas. I might not agree with all of them, but it's free advice, and I'm happy to take it. But I like plants, you're talking to a guy that's a big plant guy. I always get kind of picked on by my partners because I'm always trying to shrub it up. But it's a great way to, to really soften the project. It's not that expensive a burden of building. So more plants in my mind is a good thing.
Thank you. If the, go, um, I'm fine with going forward with the TIF.
Amanda, Bruce?
I'm on board.
Me too.
That was an easy discussion.
I think we just had the last meeting with the sixty percent still.
Well, I'll, I'll, I've mentioned this privately, but I did not want to have.
people were at, and I didn't want people to feel uncomfortable with it, so, I appreciate everyone's patience and waiting, and not till the next meeting, um, but with that waiting, we have a five oh.
That's, uh, good, I appreciate that feedback. If you don't mind, so everybody's on the same page, including the developer, I would like to read through this list of items, and then if we can talk about next steps and timing on the setting of the public hearing.
By order.
Okay, uh, the council is directing, um, going towards the creation of a tax increment financing district for the construction of eighty-eight unit apartment complex proposed by Blackstone Estates. This will be a pay-as-you-go TIF note in the amount of 1.95 million dollars, interest rate of 3.8%, available from 90% of available tax increment. Twenty percent of the units would be occupied by individuals earning 50% or less of the area median income. Income restrictions would be required for the term of the TIF assistance. The city will complete a look back provision, at least two, and maybe three. Um, the TIF agreement will include provisions regarding the management of the development and requirements for that. The TIF agreement would include a provision regarding ownership of the development. The development will have a minimum assessment of 14 million dollars, minimum assessed value. Over the 14-year TIF term, the city would retain 10% of the tax increment, estimated to be 216,131 dollars, and the city will continue to receive the original tax, which is included in the 216. Based on state statute and the requirement for notices to the county and to the school district, the soonest that a public hearing could be set, because they have to be given 30 days, um, and it has to be published, and some of the notices have to be after the publication, the soonest we could hold a public hearing is September 28th, that is the last Tuesday in September, uh, if, so we could do it that night or any time thereafter. So the next regularly scheduled council meeting would be August the 14th.
October.
Or, I mean, October the 14th.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we would need a little feedback from you also about the timing.
Would it be possible that the public hearing on a separate day, that we actually vote on it?
Yes.
So we could have the public hearing on that Tuesday, the Tuesday before the council meeting.
You could choose to vote on it that night or thereafter.
I would prefer to do that, I don't like the way we currently do them, doesn't really give us some time to process any feedback, it's, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, it does, so.
Tuesday, September the 28th, also happens to be the night of our planning commission meeting, that starts at seven o'clock, so we, I think we need at least a hour and a half, um, before the planning commission meeting, if you choose to do it that night, otherwise, I don't know, the night is fine as well.
Can you not do it on October 12th?
Yeah.
Which is a Tuesday evening.
Oh, oh, October, and then have the council meeting on the 14th.
On the 14th, yeah.
Yeah, because then it doesn't interfere with your planning commission on the 28th.
Does that work? I think so, so if I heard this right, September 28th or later is the public hearing?
Yeah.
And you're thinking of having it on the 28th?
October 12th.
12th, and then the council meeting on the 14th.
Yeah.
So there was like a little time to digest.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's appropriate, that's not a problem.
Um, not to interrupt, but just a question, I guess, for the council, is there any reason that you would want the public hearing further in advance, only if there is comment from the public and something needs to change, there's time built in to do that?
A week before? I'm not opposed to that.
That, you know, today and later?
I'm not opposed to that, I mean, I don't want to wait too much later to actually have a council meeting or vote on it, but, I mean, the only thing I care about is that the public hearing is on a separate day than when we actually vote, in terms of the distance between those two days, I don't care.
So the idea to vote would be October 14th?
Yep.
And then we'd hold a public hearing.
Sometime prior.
Sometime.
Like the 3rd or something like that?
The 5th?
The 5th.
I'm not coming in on Sunday, Tom.
Is there a day of the week that was better?
What? Hi, whatever, however you guys want to go about this.
Is Tuesday a preferred day?
Hmm.
Okay.
So if you guys have your calendars that week before, through the 8th, if there's a date that right now everybody knows that they're, they're committed to.
The week of the 4th? I don't have anything. I don't have anything super important, I don't have any blocks, anyone have any issues with any days?
No.
So why don't you guys kind of figure out what works and what complements.
Need a motion on anything?
You should.
Or destruction, situation.
Grand.
Good corrections.
So the bill, some appropriate notices, inappropriate meetings, and prepare appropriate action counts for consideration at the time you have the presentation, I'll look forward to that action.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Dave, I appreciate your patience with us. That's not, not a problem at all, I think we went through a process, that's how it's supposed to work, and I really appreciate your time and consideration, really excited about it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll have to report this administration.
We have a second quarter, we have a third quarter, a presentation, and a, I guess, we plan to provide a presentation, and just answer questions at the council meeting.
I don't have questions on that.
No questions?
Public word is, there's the report, and I have this, we're in another council, I don't have any questions, please? I was getting excited thinking, oh, Bryce, man, move on. Well, that's not very nice. Just get ready. I know you are. You look sad.
Go ahead, if you had to.
No, I was just going to ask if you were more close to the, maybe go with one, right about, because it's almost like you were ready to rock home.
Bugs.
I'll just go ahead and yield my time.
So go very quick. Uh, Josh, just step out, or did he?
Okay.
Oh, okay. All right, good evening, counsel, thank you again for more time, um, great presentation, tons of good feedback from his family back in the day, absolutely love the PD and the presentation, thank you very much, we really appreciate that, it's kind of a big deal,
Public words, there's the report and I did. Anyone have any questions? Please? I got excited thinking, ah Bryce, move on.
Well, that's not very nice.
Just get ready.
I know what you're.
You look sad.
Go ahead if you had to.
No, I was just gonna ask if you were more close to being maybe go with the line. It sounds like you are ready to rock.
I'll just go ahead and yield my time.
So go very quick. Josh, just step out or did he?
Okay, he had to go.
Oh, okay. All right. Good evening, Council. Thank you again for more time. Great presentation, tons of good feedback from his family back then. They absolutely love the PD and the presentation. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. It's kind of a big deal. Not enough departments make that that big a deal, so.
I have a question regarding that.
Yeah.
Do you plan on doing one for Sergeant Bell's promotion?
It's on the schedule for the next council meeting.
There we go.
I didn't want to steal either one of their thunder when they told us on the same day.
I want to congratulate you on making a big deal of it and having the entire police force out here.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, I cannot make our staff do that. That's them on their own coming out to show support for their partners, which is awesome. The other, Josh would have been here with everybody, but he's at a funeral, so he's gone for the day. So, no, it's a great turnout and I love the family being able to do that. And I know my jobs that I've had and we've done that is a cool deal, so, because it is a big deal. So, hard of adding this new officer Malachi, this growth position for the department, which facilitated a new patrol schedule. And I know typically work schedules for the departments aren't something that the council would even see, but it goes along with our philosophy of being transparent and letting you all see what kind of these positions do for the department, what it means for the city. So the reason for the new, why do we gotta do this is we added a new patrol officer. Where do you stick that person in? We also added a sergeant position, which in and of itself didn't cause that, but the creation of the new hybrid patrol officer investigator and then was a necessitated new schedule. And then just allowing me to have more time to do more of the admin stuff, attend more trainings, be more productive in meetings. I'm constantly leaving department head meetings to go to calls because we don't have that coverage. So, all the reasons for the new patrol schedule and really take that new position, move everything around, build better quality coverage for the city. All right, did I jump too? So, highlights of the new schedule. What is it for the officers? It'll be a five-on, two-off, two-on, five-off schedule for them. So, what it does is it basically, that schedule gives the officers every other weekend off, which in law enforcement, as Bryce can attest, is, doesn't happen very often. The shifts are eleven and a half hours long in order to get to that point. And then the eighty hours every two weeks is still there because you have seven shifts in that two weeks and then one of the shifts is only eleven hours. So it gets you right at eighty hours. So, we took this schedule. Big thing for me, the officers created their own patrol schedule. What that did is get buy-in from them and you really can't complain about a schedule you create yourself. We then vetted it, brought in Tom, met with Kelly, who's not here anymore, and vetted it. Does it fit our work profile? Does it fit the benefits? Does it fit our schedule? And then it does, eighty hours every two weeks. And again, that quality of life for the officers not having to work every weekend. All right, so the new scheduled shifts, there's five shifts. There's the sergeant hybrid shift. There's my shift. There's an afternoon shift, an evening shift, and a patrol part-time schedule. So, we still are gonna have in this schedule, part-time officers covering the day shift during the weekends. So when you see this graph here, what you're seeing is the five different shifts. The color isn't as brilliant here, but what it shows is across the top are the twenty-four hours of the day and the days of the week down below. And you can see that only between the six, or the beginning of the six o'clock, or the seven o'clock hour, and then down at the five and six o'clock PM, seventeen and eighteen hours are the only times when we have, and then two o'clock to six o'clock in the morning are the only times that we have one person working. So, I guess in essence, from two, the start of the two o'clock hour to the start of the eight o'clock hour and then the five o'clock, seventeen hundred and eighteen hundred are the only times you have one officer working. On the weekend, you have your day patrol from seven AM, or from two in the morning AM until two PM. You have one officer working on the weekends. So, the big thing is schedule twenty-four hour coverage during having a patrol officer in town. This schedule, by adding that, and this is why we added that, it, all the other time is double coverage. So you have two patrol officers in the city. A big highlight and the reason why the officers really like this, from that seven o'clock PM until two o'clock in the morning, the bar times, the drunken times, the fight times, we have two officers in town scheduled. And that, that's a big deal for the officers to know when you go into one of those calls, your backup's with you as opposed to fifteen, twenty minutes away for the sheriff's department. It is, and it, it's, it's hard to put a price tag on that, but it is a great thing for the officers. Along with that, I don't know if this is just delayed. Sorry for my timing. But it, it offers a lot of advantages. Right off the bat, overtime. Right now, under our current schedule with having so much more single officer coverage, anytime an officer has training, sick, or vacation, we have to fill that with somebody else and that's either a part-timer at their rate, or we have to do it with overtime. And going back, you can see if you take each one of those shifts and you take out any of the other shifts on a day, those bars can be slid and the officers can be moved up or down. That eliminates that gap without any overtime or without using part-timers. So it allows more flexibility when an officer does want to take vacation or is at a training or calls in sick. We can manipulate the other shifts, including mine, the sergeant position, afternoon, or the evening, up and down to get that coverage achieved, which makes it a lot better for scheduling. I already talked about the increased dual over, or increased dual coverage. Reduces response times because if an officer's on a call, they would have to wait till they're done with that call to go to the second call. Having two officers in town allows multiple responses. If it is a hot call, two officers can go. Another call comes out, a noise, fight, and that's stable or code four at that call. The other officer can peel off and go to that call. Huge number four is that flexibility for investigations. This, this can't be understated that simply before, if we needed to go investigate something, we couldn't because we couldn't leave the city to go do it. Having Sergeant Bell and myself working at the same time during the day, during the week, when, that's when all investigations are done with police departments. They're Monday through Friday positions. That's when banks are open. It's when most businesses are open. It allows Craig or myself to leave the city to go investigate, interview suspects, meet them at their workplace. If we get a case where Craig is gonna be the primary investigator, he can go for two or three days and not have to worry because I'm here to cover the road. And that's just something we haven't been able to do before and that's, I've thanked you many times, but that's a huge benefit of this growth position. Minimizes those GICs, we call them, gap in coverage where there is nobody in town because of the flexibility to slide people around. And we're not relying on sheriff's department coverage. Reduces the dependence on our part-time officers. You know, they're part-time for a reason. They have other stuff going on. One of them owns two health clubs and, and John has a lot going on in his off-duty time and it, it reduces the calls to them that, hey, can you get here in an hour? So we can do something. Increase ability for R and R for our staff. That can't be understated enough. Everything about the mental health of officers is huge. Giving them that quality family time of having every other weekend off. Bryce can attest to it. I can attest to it when I started. I would work a four-two that only got me a full weekend off every twelve weeks. So, and you, otherwise it was all partial. You might get a Friday, Saturday, but you're there on a Sunday and it just doesn't fit into what our spouses are typically working. And it's huge for rest and relaxation for the officers so that when they are here, they're not overstressed and they're not burdened with the other obligations of their family that they can't attend. A huge thing, and I put it red here for the mayor, is no additional budget needed to implement this schedule. It's a zero cost. We have the officers, we have the staff. The only reason we did this was to maximize the efficiency of the officers working and then hit those set points that we are desiring. Ability for me to do more of my job, investigations, gaps in coverage. And this really accomplishes that better than I think any other schedule could. So with that, short and sweet, I don't need any action per se because the schedule isn't in place yet, won't go in place until Malachi is off of his field training and we have all the staff necessary. But given our philosophy and our mantra, it's community values based. We want to know what you think about it. Do you guys have any comments or questions about it, about how it was developed or why?
Just, that's considered short and sweet. That's all I got.
I looked and it was like thirteen minutes, fourteen minutes, wasn't it?
I, I think it's a great schedule. Awesome.
In all seriousness, we've been, I mean, for years and years and years talking about getting twenty-four-seven police coverage in town. Not only do we have twenty-four-seven police coverage, but we also have adequate police coverage of that. So, thanks for all your work.
Oh, and all to you and your votes and your staffing because that's what allows us to get us there. And I do want to say that this is scheduled coverage still, but as we have scheduled coverage twenty-four-seven now, we still have gaps in coverage because of those things that we're talking about, the training, vacation, sick calls. This allows that gap to be covered, make it even less because we're able to shift everybody and make it. And, and really the, the schedule in and of itself, I'll tell you, a lot of police departments keep this schedule under lock and key because we don't want the public to know what we're working. We don't want them to know, we have two on here, one on here. Give me a break. This, you pay our salaries, we protect you. You should know what we work. You don't know when we're working. You don't know what days and, you know, everything during the schedule. You don't know when we do and don't have coverage. But this is part of that philosophy of transparency. You know the shifts we work, you know, you know, that's just important to us. That's why in our public house, public open house coming, you know, we want you to see our police department. We want you to walk through, we want you to see what you pay for. It's, it's that transparency that we're all about. We're excited about that coming up, September eleventh. If you've all seen the flyer and everything, we're super excited. Got Air Care, you know, coming and landing a helicopter for us is super cool. If you haven't seen that, that's awesome. Get to see a helicopter up close with all the air stuff and all the equipment and trucks and it's gonna be a great, great day.
So I only have one comment on the schedule.
Okay.
That I noticed, and that's from being a guy who used to work midnights, is that there's no time overlap with a supervisor. Not even a half hour. For your night guys.
You also know what happens no matter what.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying.
It's more dedication at the end of the shift.
Sure.
You know, I think you all know this, my shift technically starts at seven. I'm here at six every day for that overlap. And typically, our officers are here a half an hour, forty-five minutes early getting ready and that's when that's gonna be done. We thought of that, butt up, but we.
Don't want to get Craig too early in the morning though, either.
Well, you know, honestly Bryce, the thought of, the thought of that, we wanted to push that double coverage further down so that the officer, if we, in order to make that eleven and a half and to get that half an hour overlap, we would have to then have less in the afternoon at seven o'clock. And at seven o'clock, it's more important to have double than it is to have, you know, the supervisor.
Seven AM, yeah.
You know that informal roll call that happens, so.
That's the only answer.
Nope, but we thought about it and as we grow more, the schedules will change. And another thing, this can change at any minute. I mean, if, if this isn't doing its job, we'll make the audible and we'll make the change.
I think it looks really good.
We're excited.
I just really like that all the officers got to weigh in and figure it out themselves. So that's huge to me and something like what I strive for in my, my day job. Get that buy-in. I think it's very important.
And I know I, I stated that when I got hired and I, and every day I hold that I'm a servant leader. It's what can I do to make them the best at their job? Because in the end, they're out there with the public more than I am. And if they are coming and working, I'll bring us up. I'm not afraid to throw them under the bus. Kibby, Police Department where Malachi came from, two-week day shift, two-week overnight shift.
Oh, yuck.
Yuck.
You rotated from days to nights every two weeks. And I love them guys that they're doing their, for whatever reason they have it, but in modern police education and philosophy, rotating your biometrics that much, that quick, isn't good for you. And they do it because, I asked them, why did they do it? Because that's what the city needed to have the coverage that they do. And I said, well, at the expense of the officers? They don't need to do that. And so, it's, they're working the schedule. They should have a say. And I gave them parameters of eighty hours of work week, you know, all the laws that we do and overtime and all that, and they developed it. And this was actually Brenton Carcuff's schedule that they all voted on. They voted on it. They, there was multiple schedules presented. They voted on it and came up with that, so. And I'm proud of them because it's not easy to do.
Was it unanimous?
It was at the end. It wasn't at first, but it, it was at the end.
Yeah, he's like, well, that's good.
Someone profits, typically someone loses and someone lost having every Friday night off. But then they gained having every other full weekend off, so.
Which is more important.
Yeah, that's huge. And even that person that voted for it, it's a hundred percent, so. Thank you for your time, Mayor. Appreciate it, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire department.
I just have an update on the fire service advisory report. Kate and I had with, uh, last week.
Last week.
Friday.
Love that back.
Basically, we saw a couple of the items that we went over year-end reports, but the primary discussion was the two items that we talked about during the work session. One was the prepayment of the credit and the second one was the change in the formula. On the prepayment of the credit, Kate simply indicated, Council of City would be open to it. You need to have a discussion with the council. We will be formally having that discussion on the twenty-sixth, which would allow us to provide that feedback to the townships for their discussions in September on that particular topic. Obviously, it's New Market Township. They brought it up. They're gonna be okay with it. I'm assuming that if we're prepaying to Cedar Lake Township, they'll probably be okay with it too. But the township boards will also be having discussions about the formula. New Market Township, I think will be okay with it because they'll benefit with it and they suggested it. Cedar Lake Township would end up having to pay it more. I mean, you have to ship the bird calls and build a change in how it's allocated. The council had previously discussed that we would be okay with it, but we've had, have the faces on the council since that last discussion was held formally, so we want to have that formal discussion on the twenty-sixth as well. So, Kelly and I will bring that forward for, for that meeting, for discussion direction. We'll feed it back to the townships. Kate and I have been asked to come out and attend the Cedar Lake Township meeting in September. So we'll be doing that, service resource and our discussion. The one thing we did warrant to them, or two things we did warrant to them. New Market Township asked that we would not only pay it early, but pay it with interest. Kate, yeah.
That's exactly what I did. I'm like, no.
That, that was agreed to. I, I basically explained, this was the agreement that we agreed to. It's in the contract six years ago. No.
They have a way of trying to throw things out there to see if it gets traction.
So they ask for more, their money upfront and then wants their interest from.
I can give you names if you.
No, I don't want names.
And, and with three, so indicated, yep, we talked about, but it was the issue of can you find reserves at zero? I told you, I, I gave you my recommendation on where we would pull those reserves from to, to make that happen. We pulled out of the suite. And then the other portion of it with regards to the formula, Kate just simply indicated that, yep, the council's previous, it's part of it. Three of those people are here, two people aren't, but it's also been now at this point, almost two years since we've had that discussion. So, indicated we would talk about it again and see where we are at on it. The one question we will be asking the council on the twenty-fifth is, what level of buy-in do you need? Does it need to be full consensus or can it be a two out of three? Or a one out of three if it's us, because it's our contract? Because that may be a very real possibility. I'm not looking for an answer right now. I'm just mulling it a little bit. Do you need full consensus from the group in order to, to change the contractors when we, at the end of the year? So, just start chewing on that a little bit.
Rich, you still yielding your time?
I'll take a little bit of it. I'll show you what little looks like. The I thirty-five utilities project done and everything successfully tested. Thank you. I'll stand for any questions.
That was brief and to the point. Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Microscopic.
Community development.
We're building up the house. We've taken eleven new house building permits over the last week.
Where are they putting them all?
All their heights, three in Pitsville.
Any, any traction, any movement at all with Christmas pines?
Today, in fact, late today, the, one of the owners, you know, in response to some structural signs, I can have time to review that.
But no, no reason to think we'll be seeing building permits on that.
I don't know. I, I don't think we'll see many, any of this fall really.
Quick trip? Anything?
I'm gonna defer to Tom to answer that.
So, we've had discussions with the ownership and the broker that represents them. They've indicated that Quick Trip is still committed to the site they're in, and that it is still on their twenty-twenty-two construction schedule. They've indicated that they're trying to, they're continuing to try and go through these, private easement issues to that end. But there is the reality that at some point, and we've been advised in the past around October, Quick Trip has to finalize their construction schedule for twenty-twenty-two. So there is time. They're working on it. At this point, they feel confident they can get it done. But the clock is, is ticking. We have repeated asked them, what can we do to help? And we've basically been told to let storage. So, so they're working on it. If that circumstance changed, we would let the council know, but right now, that's for the state.
I just knew it was about this time last year that they said, yeah, it's not happening in twenty-twenty-one, so.
Parks, there was a report. Any additional comments?
C C E C.
We meet next, or this coming Tuesday. I think the main things will be community picnic and, well, probably just community picnic, but then the open house. I don't know if C C E C is involved in that or not. No, okay. Or are we also involved in the community picnic?
Just a discussion on community picnic. And Halloween and, you know, whether we want to go with a drive through.
So speaking of community picking, still, the council can let me know if they're going to be attending and helping with community picking. Just let me know. That was in the last community, or last council update, I guess, I'm out.
And that's what, when again?
It's twenty-eight. The event itself is from eleven until two generally, except for the few people who come and do the early setup and later take down for general, for helping hands from about ten-thirty until about two-thirty.
It's on my calendar. I'll be there.
Let me push some stuff around.
Kid birthday to deal with, kind of that sample, trying to figure something out. Other reports, Scale, Scale's tomorrow. The Scale exec meeting, the notes were emailed out earlier today. Service delivery.
That meeting is on Monday. So I'll report the next one.
M B T A.
I have no report.
I thirty-five.
Meeting is in September.
Yeah, Chamber of Commerce. Isn't there, I got a call from Josh Malwitz yesterday and I can't be at it, but I'm assuming it's, his voicemail is a little weird. It was, is it the ten-year anniversary of the chamber next week?
It is the appreciation for all chamber members.
Okay.
Free luncheon for all chamber members and we're honoring the people that have been members for ten years.
Okay. He just said ten-year anniversary and that was, there was no context on that, so I wasn't sure what that was.
I believe.
It's Thursday, next week, Thursday.
Yeah, but I believe it.
No, it's Thursday.
New Market is the ten years.
We're sponsoring a Lakeville Chamber thing at the exact same time, so.
So Kate, is this, what, what does the, right, is this a luncheon?
It's a small luncheon. We're doing, I don't even remember the name of the place. They're catering in chicken. We can choose roasted chicken or, because, did you get the email too?
No, she's.
I'm just, I'm just saying that if you go, it should help me with, you know, some.
Oh, I'm not going.
I was just bringing it up as a.
Okay, yeah.
The council and all.
Even though I'm a paying member of the.
You would be different because it's already part of your, you and Kate, you're going, you're already chamber members. So, parts of the board, but a number of staff have been invited, the people who normally.
Gotcha.
Chamber, the rest of the council.
Right, that's it, thank you.
You know, and quite honestly, the chamber has contact memory. Say, who's coming, who's coming, who's coming.
We're trying to get the head count down so we know what to order.
And that's been one of the, well, we're trying to, to help out. So it would be possible for the chamber to estimate what the cost per individual is so somebody's going to attend.
I don't think that would be a problem.
Well, it's.
I'll let you get, you guys.
We can pack that out after.
Right.
Yeah, we can accept a free meal.
Get far, yeah.
Okay, I would say.
You can just.
Yeah, let me, next time, I think I have the numbers back at my house on my other computer.
We're going to discuss by council.
Second.